Recording in progress.
Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller? Here. Oh, Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Solfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Darren?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have 14 out of 14.
All right, thank you. Next up is item two. Reminder to please speak directly into your microphone. If you're online, remember to raise your hand and put your hand down when you'd like to speak, and also mute when you are not speaking. All right, item three is items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything tonight?
No.
Do not. Right on then to item four, matters from the public. Do we have anybody online? I don't see anybody in the room for anything not on the agenda.
If there's anyone who is attending online for a matter which is not on the agenda, if you could please raise your hand. No one's raising their hand.
Okay. Then we'll go to item number five, the consent agenda. Alderman Chantet?
And we have approval for the county executive session minutes from October 19th of 2021, and Resolution 22-19-R authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract with WA Management, Inc., for the 2022 East Side Property Maintenance Program. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion by Chantet, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Okay, we will move on to item number six, and Alderman Beck will leave the proceedings for item six and then return. Item six is approval for the Class D1 Restaurant All Liquor Liquor License application for Myris LLC located at 15 East Wilson Street.
Yes, I-
Alderman Rosado?
Yes. The Batavia Police Department Investigations Unit conducted an investigation, a background check, to determine whether Myris LLC doing business as Myris Restaurant at 15 East Wilson Street. We have Melissa Mano as the president, John Hamill, the general manager, along with Ryan Shaver, and see if they were suitable to receive a liquor license, which they both do have one already. All documents have been submitted by the business, and there's no problems to preclude them from receiving a Class D1 Restaurant liquor license as of this date. I don't know if we have anybody here, if Melissa or John are online, to talk about this?
Okay. I'll say I'm excited that we get that building back up and running and open again on River Street. I think that'll be a good thing for downtown, especially with the comedy club across the street.
Oh, absolutely. Any discussion? Okay. And I would make a motion to move to City Council approval of Class D1 Restaurant Liquor License application for Myris LLC, DBA Myris Restaurant at 15 East Wilson Street, Batavia.
Second. Motion by Rosado, second by Ewer. Roll call, please.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren? Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
And Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Next is item seven, approval of a D1 Restaurant All Liquor Liquor License for application for Condi Corporation doing business as Taco Grill and Salsa Bar located at 107 North Batavia Avenue. Alderman Rosado?
Yes, as well, an investigation and background check to determine whether Condi Corporation doing business as Taco Grill and Salsa Bar located at 107 North Batavia Avenue, and its corporate officers, Gandhi Falcone and Jose Oliver, might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city of Batavia. They submitted all the documents, and there are no problems which would preclude them from doing business and receiving a Class D1 liquor license. Does anyone hear from Condi Corporation?
No.
Any discussion? All right, then I'll make a motion to approve and move to City Council approval of Class D1 Restaurant and Liquor License application for Condi Corporation, DBA Taco Grill and Salsa Bar at 107 North Batavia Avenue.
Second. Motion by Rosado, second by Ewer. Roll call, please.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley? Malley?
Aye.
Thank you. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
And Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Up next would be item number eight, which is ordinance 2206 proposing establishment of the special service area number 67 Kirkland Chase Phase III Wind Energy Pass and Wagner Road. To start this off, Alderman Beck has returned to the proceedings now for item number eight. And this is a special service area for the Phase III of Kirkland Chase. Scott, did you have any comments on this? Or Joel's here? Joel's here, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Joel's going to do this one.
Okay.
Yes, hopefully everybody can hear me. Again, this is for a backup special service area for Kirkland Chase Phase III. This property was annexed in 2002. The annexation agreement required the developer to not object to city formation of a backup special service area. The city did not undertake establishing the special service area while the developer owned the property, and like we have done in other areas of the city of late, we are proposing now to establish the, this backup special service area. The subdivision homeowners' association has maintained its common access driveways and stormwater detention areas, and the city has not had to maintain them. Regardless, we still want to get the backup special service area on the books. Last year, we notified the 25 homeowners and the association that we would be pursuing establishing the backup special service area as it was envisioned with the annexation agreement. The homeowners' association informed me that the owners may object to the city forming a backup SSA. I did not receive feedback from individual owners except for the association representative herself, who is, who is an owner. Special Service Area Formation procedures require the city to pass an ordinance indicating its intention to establish a backup special service area. That is what is in front of you this evening, and ordinance 22-06 would in fact do that. With approval, we, with approval of the ordinance, we would publish a legal notice for an April public hearing, and we would begin to prepare the notification mailing to the owners for that hearing, and the procedure would then progress per the timeline that was attached to my memo. Staff recommends the council approve ordinance 22-06 as presented.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody online? I think this is one of those that we, as aldermen, especially the ones that this falls in their ward, this is going to be something we're going to have to work on with direct communication with them to try to make sure that the residents realize that this is just a backup special service area, and it is in their best interest to have this in place, so that way they or their homeowners' association is not trying to figure out how to come up with the money to take care of those common areas, if anything, and that side of it falls apart. Mark?
Yeah, I guess I just have two comments. Is there a reason we sent the letter last year and now we're just working on this? I mean, we sent the first letter saying, hey, by the way, we're thinking about this, because transparency-wise, it looks like, hey, we send you a letter, we're going to do this, and then we do nothing for a year, and now we're going to do something else. So that's a little concerning to me. Number two is, do we make sure we don't do this again, and that we get them done at the beginning rather than trying to come back and fix them later, because it just causes everybody grief?
Yes, and that's what we did for, most recently, for the commercial development on Randall Road, was make sure that we did establish that backup. That is our current policy, is to do those right away.
Yeah, and the issue there is, is if we do it right away and we have one property owner to deal with, and it's part of the development agreement, it's a lot easier to make that happen. So we have to really make sure that, you know, we're, we as the aldermen, make sure that we stay on top of that with our community development staff and make sure that that happens, because as you see, when it doesn't happen for 22 years or 20 years, it becomes a problem sometimes to get those through.
So why did we wait a year?
Joel, can you respond to that?
Sure. The other things did come up. We did get busy with other projects. There, regarding the transparency issue, we would still, tonight's action doesn't establish the special service area. It is just a necessary step in order to hold a public hearing that, with which we would be presenting to the council, an ordinance to act, to actually establish the special service area. The public hearing will be noticed, and letters will go out to the owners to inform them that the public hearing will take place. So regarding transparency, it will, they will get the notification.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, and I agree that that's going to, that's like the next step. I just know that if I got a letter about something and then didn't hear anything for over a year, I'd be like, oh, I thought they abandoned that, and then now that's creating a limited amount of time for them to get together as a group if they want to discuss it. So it just seems-
Last year, in terms of the workload in community development, I think both Joel and Scott are online can attest to the fact that it was one of the busiest years that either of them have ever experienced in that department, so we did get behind on some things.
Yeah, and when it, when it's a backup special service area, I'll say, I think that probably doesn't rank real high in what they're going through when you've got all the developments that are going around-
Starbucks and Tufa Lee.
And, you know, 200 houses being built. I mean, there's a lot of things that have happened over this last year, and I'm not trying to make an excuse for it, but that's the reality. And, you know, I'm sure that where it fell on the list of all those things happening-
Yeah.
And timeframes, it just backed off. And it wouldn't have mattered whether it happened now or back then, a year ago. The process is exactly the same to get there. So the, you know, the public notice and everything would be the same exact procedures.
But it's a good point.
Just something we should-
And ideally, you know, this, this should have been 20 years ago when we first annexed this, but nobody on staff was here at that time other than maybe Jeff Albertson, but he wasn't involved in any of that. So, you know, all we can do is just say that it was one of those things that, you know, fell through the cracks, and we tried to, you know, fix it as, as we go along.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody online have any questions, comments? If not, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2206 proposing establishment of special service area number 67 Kirkland Chase Phase III Wind Energy Pass and Wagner Road. Second, second. Motion by Wolf, second by Serone. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Right, thank you. Now we will go back to the city services portion of our agenda tonight. Item number nine is Resolution 2213-R authorizing Task Order Number Two with V3 for Carriage Crest Alternatives Analysis and Final Engineering for an amount not to exceed $157,000, or $157,769.
Yes, and I'm going to defer this to Andrea.
Welcome.
Hello. This is for the next phase of the Carriage Crest project. We just finished up this last year with the examination of the basin and looking at the deep wells and seeing what the characteristics of that underground area was, and if the water would actually percolate into the ground and/or kind of transfer. What we found was that there were, it wasn't really conducive to that, and we extended the study. Of course, we did the drainage study, looking to get rain, and we had a drought this past summer. So we extended the study and had the last wells pulled and the data pulled at the beginning of December, and that still was the same data that was saying it was inconclusive, and it really didn't change from what we had previously received. So we brought forward, going forward with the gravity sewer, which was the best option without having to utilize a pump system. And so we sought out professional services to do an alternative analysis as well as final engineering. The alternatives analysis will provide three different routes. If you guys recall, it was anywhere from $3 to $4 million for the final engineering with the construction. So we want to look at different alternative routing. If we go down Timber and Shabana, it is a potentially 20, 25-foot deep sewer, and we're looking at potentially going up to Fabian and then possibly through the Sisters Covenant, sorry, up there right by the homestead. So those are the options that we're looking at, and the qualifications were excellent on all firms, and V3 came in with, when we do it based on cost, that was the selected consultant. So we are looking forward to having a kickoff meeting with them and get going on this, and looking at all the permitting tasks that we're going to have to go through, as well as any additional borings to find out what the characteristics of the soil will be, because we find, think that that's going to be very important, and we know we have depth to deal with. And then there'll be outreach meetings to the residents as well. So as I said, this is the next phase to get going towards construction, and we were granted ARPA funds, and so this will be the second project that is going to be able to utilize those funds. Anybody have any questions?
Mark?
Yeah, Andrea, I just have one question. An open item still exists on what's going to happen with the dam and the depot pond, and I'm wondering about the discharge into the river. So if the dam were to go away, and the discharge is located where the river is now, and then the river moves, what's the effect on, what will we do? Because it would be a tremendous amount of erosion, I think, then would be created by that as it winds its way to where the river actually is.
I can probably jump in on that, and, because this won't be the only pipe. There's lots of pipes along the river that discharge into the river. So what they're going to need to do is almost similar to what we're going to do in Mahoney Creek, and that is, you're going to build little riverines or little sub-channels that go back to those pipes, and they'll be, they'll be stabilized and native plantings, and the water will discharge out of a concrete pipe, but then it'll go into like a natural stream, if you will, that'll then flow down to the river.
Okay, thank you.
And one of the options is just utilizing the existing outfall, so that would be considered, I think, with those improvements to the dam.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Anybody care to make a motion?
So moved.
So moved, anybody second?
Second.
Roll call.
Was it Vogelsinger that made the motion?
Uh, Beck.
Beck.
Beck, thank you. Okay, Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And Rosado?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Thank you. I think for clarity, I think when we either motion or second, I think we should name who it is that's doing it, so it's easier for Mark to be able to know who it is that made either the motion or the second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, Resolution 2214-R authorizing execution of contract with V3 Construction Group LTD for the Mahoney Creek Tributary Detention Construction in the amount not to exceed $765,930.
Yeah, this has been in the works for a few years, and we received a lot of emails about this last couple days. Andrea, I'll defer to you at this time.
Okay. And just to note, Resolution 22015 is the next one also regarding this, but it's for the construction engineering services. This is a project that the city has looked at for quite a few years now, and I know it dates back probably to the 2015 flood event, and that has always been a flash flood area where there's not enough room to convey all the water that is coming from about a mile worth of Kirk Road from Wilson Street and Pine Street, and the low point is at Winter Green where the creek runs underneath Kirk Road, and we get some runoff from Fermi as well. So all that water just flashes through there, and the residents have had some flooding issues as well as a lot of erosion. So we've looked at this piece of property with an eye for putting in some detention to hold back some of that water upstream and let it be released slowly and not have those effects that it has been having for the last couple of years. And the city did not own this property when this development was built and turned over. Somehow, the developer sold Lot 4 one day, and the next day or next week, they deeded us the detention lot, which is Lot 5, except they already sold that with the other property. So I actually worked with the owners of that lot back in 2015, 16, 17, on looking at developing that property for their home, and then they were selling it, and the city took the opportunity to purchase the detention lot at that point. And during that time, the city was also exploring options for putting in the stormwater detention as a Phase 1 study. We were able to secure that piece of property at the beginning of 2018, and then as these events went on, and we had some funding, we decided to move forward with engineering for this, and it was brought up at multiple watershed meetings that we had, starting in 2020, as one of the areas where HR Green and RES had looked at the creek along both the tributary and the main stem for stabilization and erosion. So as I said, this is upstream, so this is holding back most of the water and releasing it at a slower rate. And when we put this basin in for the 10-year storm event, the peak flows are going to be reduced 69% to all downstream residents on that tributary, and then the main stem past Redan, where Cleveland and Redan, everyone south of there and west will have that benefit. And then the 100-year storm event, the flows will be reduced 48%. So we've worked with HR Green and came up with the plan to put, encapsulate a drainage way that's coming from the south into this basin, and create some wetlands in there. We also are working with the Corps of Engineers and finalizing permits with them, and we also own, or we have rights, I should say, to an easement on Fermi's property on the east side of Kirk Road, and we are going to be utilizing that to construct some additional storage upstream. And when we put this project out to bid, we put it for the base bid for the city-owned property. Alternate 1 was to put the detention on Fermi's property. Again, this is another federal agency we are working with to try and secure access and the rights to be on there and work with them through their planting, and we'll be restoring their native prairie. And then alternate 2 was to construct a six-foot wooden fence along the length of the project, which is approximately 745 feet. We got multiple bids, which was great to see, and the low bid was V3 Construction Group, and they came in with a total of $815,500, but that included $119,000 fence costs for the alternate 2. And at this time, staff is recommending against putting that in based on what the other ranges of the costs were for the fence on that alternate 2 that are found in the memo, and also thinking long-term maintenance of a wooden fence. We are putting in a lot of evergreen trees, which there are, if there are any, I haven't seen them out there. They're all leafed trees that lose all their leaves in the winter, and then they're full coverage in the summer. So we will be putting up that screen wall with the evergreens, and that's why staff feels at this point, and that's why it's written for the $765,000 amount. It includes a 10% contingency. It just excludes alternate 2, and we felt that we would need to look at it again if felt necessary after construction and the shrubs were put in there. And also, just seeing the range of prices on here, felt that financially, to be responsible, if council so desires, it should go back out later, possibly for a different bid. So Mike had mentioned that we had gotten a lot of emails, and we have there residents that are concerned that the city is going to be taking down their screening, their trees. A lot of them have utilized this land, which has been in somebody else's ownership, and most of them do not have solid fences along there, so they use that as kind of like nature and just their own screening. So I know that's the big concern. A lot of them are in favor of the detention and retaining the water aspect. I've spoken with multiple residents out there. I just know their fear is losing what screening is out there right now. So I guess that kind of summarizes it, and obviously, there were alternates, and staff chose not to recommend one, so I will leave that there and see if there's any questions and comments.
Yeah. Do we know what the cost is to install the evergreens?
The evergreens are part of the base bid. I can, I can, here, I've got it right in front of me. They're $854 a piece, if I recall. All the trees were bid at the same cost. So the green giant, there's 54 of them total. I'm sorry, those are $380. The hardwood trees are all 840. So 380- So the green giant, there's fifty-four of them total. I'm sorry, those are three hundred and eighty dollars. The hardwood trees are all eight hundred and forty. So three hundred and eighty dollars a piece, fifty-four, for a total of twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
And we're not, uh, we're not taking down all the trees right now, are we?
Uh, I had provided, and I don't know if Andrea could pull it up, the tree removal plan.
It would be page...
That is the tree removal plan. So really anything you can, hard to see the details on the big screen, but anything in that gray, you know, that shaded gray represents basically almost all the tree removals.
Okay. And I believe we could put up that fence at any time because there's such a big difference. The one, uh, Fox has twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred for the fence, and then V three had a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred for the fence. I would assume that if we do get a fence, we could get it a lot cheaper than the one nineteen two, if it comes to that point. Do we have anybody online that has any questions or anybody in the room here?
Well, just a couple of questions if I could. So the, I, um, this is obviously a Ward one situation. I've gotten emails, um, but the only emails I've got of any concerns are the ones who actually live right along where the trees are being removed. I haven't heard any concerns from any residents that are, um, in that survey that was sent out some time ago in terms of the responses, uh, who live along the creek tributary. But as for the concerns of the residents with the trees, um, how many trees are going to be planted in total? I think you mentioned fifty-four green giant.
Fifty-four of the evergreens, um, thirteen of the swamp white oaks, nine of the sycamores, and eleven of the common hackberries. So that's twenty, thirty-three, and fifty-four, so that's eighty-seven.
Okay. Do we know how many, how many of the trees that are currently in there are actually, you know, dead or not?
There's a, a lot that are not of either great quality or I believe it is to be desired. Scott Haynes has gone out there and looked at them, and we actually have had some of them cleared along the, um, creek as it comes under Kirk Road and kind of does the two ninety-degree meanders. We had some of that cleared so we can get in there for access.
So in terms of the, uh, the quality trees that are existing, um, what's the trade-off here in terms of numbers approximately, in terms of what are being taken down and then being replaced with the eighty-four trees?
Um, you know, I have to look.
Any appro, any, I mean, just an estimate. Is it like two to one? Is it one to one and a half?
I would have to look at that a little closer to see, and I know that one of the residents had planted black walnuts, whether they were on his property or in the city's own portion. Um, I'm able to go out there and look at it and see if we can keep those in there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I did see that with some of these concerns that you guys were going to do, uh, the best you could to save as much as you could, correct?
Bless you.
To save as much of the desirable trees as possible, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of, once this is all planted, this can be, if it turns out that it's, that it's better sound mitigation than's already there, then we're all good, but if it's, turns out that it seems to be less, we can always revisit this bid on the, uh, on the fence?
Our thought was that to install a fence, I mean, people have fences installed in their properties all the time. They, it's work that can be done after the fact without much disturbance, so we always thought that we could go back in with a fence if we need to at some point in the future, and our guess is that it'll be a lot cheaper than a hundred and nineteen thousand.
I can see that from the alternates, and then certainly if any residents want to install their own fences, um, I'm, I'm assuming there wouldn't be any permit problems in terms of applications in that regard?
They should be able to get an application for a permit, yeah.
I think Jennifer has her hand up as.
Yes, thank you, Michael. Um, so kind of going along the lines of, um, the trees and items in there, um, do we know if there were invasive plants or were also removed or that will need to be removed from there?
Buckthorn and, and those types of undesirable species, I think Andrea mentioned, mentioned that, so yes.
So that's some of the, um, items that are, that were definitely pulled out of there that may have been creating that, um, that wall. Is that correct?
Yeah, existing today, um, I mean, a buckthorn will provide you screening even though it's not a desirable tree species, so that, that, I mean, again, I'm not trying to portray that all as undesirable. There are some desirable trees in there too, um, but I'm just saying there's a mixture in there to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Abby?
Andrea, um, some of my, my computer's actually slow, so I can't pull up the picture to see it clearly, but in people's backyards, like along their property line, that's where, is that where the berm will be and then the arborvitus would be up on top of the berm?
Yeah.
Laura, can you scan down to that next page?
Sure.
Yeah, so, um, the berm is going to be about five feet tall, and then it would be the arborvitae on the resident's side, and the fence would be on the opposite side, so closer to Kirk Road, further away from their home.
And then all the trees, the swamp oaks and, and the sycamores are being planted east of the arborvitus, right?
Yeah, they would not be on the top of the berm.
Okay.
So this is a planting plan.
Planting plan, so all the random dots in there, those are all the hardwood trees.
Perfect, okay. So, I mean, once those, those evergreens get to their mature size, I mean, they do create a wall. There's likely you wouldn't even see the newly replanted plantings on the other side once they're up and...
Correct, and Gary has mentioned, um, that these are so fast-growing that they are most likely going to have to be trimmed to be a hedge because we have electric that runs over there, um, east or north and south along that property line in some locations.
And under current conditions, you have very few, if any, um, of an evergreen, um, type of tree, and so in the wintertime, when leaves fall from the existing trees, you lose a lot of that sound barrier today.
From the photos, it looked like it was dense enough with a lot of probably the undesirable trees too, but, you know, dense enough that you still didn't really see through it to Kirk Road anyway, as it currently is.
Alderman Soffa?
In, in terms of the, the green giants, these are ones that we've seen planted in other communities, and they're really hardy around here, because if you go around the city, you can see that sometimes there's, um, various species of pines that are not doing very well, and these are known to be hardy and will handle the conditions along Kirk Road and everything.
Uh, very good question. That was exactly what I asked early on because evergreens are notorious for salt spray and not, not doing well, and, um, we made a point to the designers just to, to make sure that they specified a species that could handle that, so it's a salt tolerant.
Okay.
And just like with, oh, sorry, just like with the, you know, possibility of adding a fence later, you know, conditions dictated it, we could also maybe add more of the oaks and the sycamores within the basin perhaps too?
Yeah, we can see how it, um, is handled, and as I mentioned, this is an Army Corps permit, so we will be doing the monitoring and maintenance, um, until it is accepted by them, and then from there on, we'll be doing the maintenance with our annual, um, maintenance program as well.
So basically, the long and the short of it is, once everything's planted, it can be readdressed to see if additional plantings are needed or if we need to secure a more reasonable bid on a potential wooden fence if needed.
Yeah, and like I mentioned, our thought too is for that price that you're putting that in, then there is always that long-term cost of maintaining a wooden fence. It's not going to last forever, so those are, um, things that we do need to consider.
And in the event there's any additional, um, widening or other issues on Kirk Road, that's a county thing, and we could, we could work with them to try to see if they want to put up some type of sound barrier. Is that a possibility?
Correct. That is their roadway, and any improvements to that would be under their purview.
Alderman Lehman?
Thank you. Um, now, when I was looking at the document, it appeared that the bid came in pretty significantly beneath what was expected. Is that correct?
Um, it is. Um, yeah, for the base bid, and, you know, we've, obviously there is a wide range of, um, prices in here, and it, I think it just goes to show, um, also what maybe work is out there and what contractors are willing to bid. This is early in the season too, and I think there's a little bit of uncertainty.
But there would be space within the budgeted amount perhaps to add, um, more vegetation, even proactively, instead of waiting.
We could look at that.
Um, and then my other question was, it's being discussed, like, we'll wait and we'll see if a fence is needed, but what would be that impetus, like, to know a fence is needed? Would, we set a date in a year, we're going to revisit this, um, just curious what that looks like, because I don't want to just throw it out there, oh, we'll put a fence in if needed, and then it just gets dropped and then the residents are left.
The reason that the fence was actually added as an alternate is because I know that there were some concerns, um, just made by the residents, but then, you know, we do look at this in Ward, the Ward one drainage project, we were right in people's backyards on Kirk Road. All of those homes had fences. The city put up zero of them. They were all put up by private owners, and there have been some that have been replaced by private owners in the time that that project has gone on. So, you know, you have to kind of balance that, and as I mentioned, these are being paid for by ARPA funds and, um, this project as well as Carriage Crest, and I want to make useful, you know, financially responsible decisions. Um, Carriage Crest has had problems for a long time, and these are your decisions to make, but I just want to bring these before you and say, you know, there are limited funds, so, um, we can definitely look at trees and see what it looks like once it's planted. Obviously, dots on a plan look different than something out in the field when you're actually, um, seeing it there. And obviously, it is a change to what these residents have become accustomed to. I know, um, one of the residents has lived there for over thirty years, so it definitely is different, but also in that time span, a lot of those trees, I'm sure, have popped up as volunteers as well.
Um,
But we can.
I'm, I'm not in real estate at all, but like a concern I would have is that a city project would bring down property value, and, um, because that would affect us with, um, property tax and stuff in the long run also.
Removal of the flooding issues is huge in terms of, um, those individuals' property values too, so we are providing, um, an enhancement.
One enhancement, but while taking away another thing, so just, just trying to advocate here, like, if we can get more vegetation on those berms and stuff, um, I think that would be beneficial.
Okay, we can look into that.
Yeah, because I, I can remember the days where we had this room filled with people for flooding, and I think that we've been working on this for such a long time. Then Alderman Soffa?
I, I agree that flooding is the most important thing here, and it affects a lot of residential houses, correct, in terms of what we're talking about?
It does, and I mean, it even affects our road down the street. That's why the park in, on Woodland Hills and Winter Green Terrace was, um, stabilized. The, the amount and the force of that water that was coming through there off of Kirk Road kept on eroding and curving closer and closer to Winter Green Terrace, and so that was the impetus of working on that project when we did because it had a potential for taking away the road at some point and undermining it. So, you know, it's not only the flooding, it was that as well, but definitely the flooding. There are lots of residents that have to deal with that and it coming in their basements and damaging.
And I saw from the survey, there was at least a hundred and twenty residential houses along this area that is, is being affected by this, correct?
That, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but yes.
The survey, the dots that you sent out showing where all the houses were. And then in terms of the, the fencing, you mentioned how we've been doing this all along Ward one. The city hasn't, has the city ever installed any fences along Kirk?
No, not for any of our recent projects. They were all, um,
All private?
Private, that were existing fences.
Okay, thank you.
We do have two members of the public who are line, aligned too. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Oh, that's okay. I had a question about, like, the alternative fencing that's available, like, when you drive down Route fifty-nine in Bartlett and you see those big, huge copper, you know, fences that are like twenty feet tall, is that like the sound barrier type that we would be looking into if we ever went down the route of installing a real sound barrier along Kirk Road?
So, again, I, it shouldn't be us that would install an engineered sound barrier. That would be Kane County, because it's Kane County's road. Um, but for major highways, yes, that is the type of sound barriers that are used. We just put up similar, um, type, um, screening, or we use it for screening purposes around our electric substations, and to do the Paramount substation all the way around was into the seven figures. So that's, that kind of hopefully gives you a sense of scale on how much it costs. It, it's very expensive. They last forever. Once you get them up, they last forever, but it's not cheap.
And I will add, I know Rahat's online, but he was talking to me about this in a past, um, experience he had was residents fought to get a wall put up, and they fought, and they fought, and then the wall was put up, and then the same residents came back and complained that the wall was up, and now they're staring at a wall. Um, you know, so once the wall is there, it's, it's there and it's not coming down.
I personally think that anything we can do to do it with any kind of trees, you know, evergreens, whatever you have to do, is so much better than putting up any kind of fence, no matter if it's one we have to maintain every year, every five years, every ten years, or it's, you know, the concrete super barriers that are out there like along fifty-nine. You know, that still ends up costing into the future. Yes, there's still maintenance on the trees and everything else, and we have to be concerned with that, but I think any way we can do it that, you know, if we have to throw another twenty thousand dollars worth of, you know, arborvitae out there to do this or to help start that off, and then people have to realize that it takes time for those to come back. I mean, I've got, I think, seven, I think I put seven arborvitae on one side of my lot, and it blocks out two houses from my backyard in my neighborhood, so it, when they're there and they establish, that's a really nice thing to have. So, and mine got a lot bigger than I thought they were going to get.
Alderman Serone?
No, I was just going to add, I like this plan and I like the approach. I think it's the right thing to do to move in stages. We have, uh, obviously there's some, some fear, uh, from the residents, but I think we've proven historically that we will do what's right, uh, and react to, to obviously flooding, blight, things like that, but to just jump in with something, um, until we know what the results of this are, I think would be irresponsible. I like your plan, and I like that we have options to move forward in the future if need be.
I agree. This seems like a very reasonable approach, and I really like the incorporation of native vegetation, lots of trees, um, and how the evergreens will provide year-round barrier, and they do grow very nicely.
Anyone else? I think you said we have some people online right now?
We have two people online. We also have a considerable amount of comments in the chat, and I could go up to the screen and scroll through those items which are in the chat so that all of you can see those comments first, and then if the people online have additional comments that they wanted to make, does that sound?
I think that's, that's fine, because, yeah, I saw them pop up, and sometimes I could wheel around and get to read them, and some of them I didn't get to see.
Where do their property lines start on this diagram?
Right here is pretty much the property line. You could see this is a hammerhead, and so right along here is the property line. And then we have the tenth, the dash line is our 10-foot utility easement. And this project is also going to be stabilizing the first set of homes that about this. This is where the overland, or overflow here will be, and the restrictor into the creek, and then to stabilize this, the city is going forward with the first home to kind of have a soft, softening effect.
Just for a little bit of scale, could you just give me an approximation of, if we have Kirk Road right here, about how much distance is, are we talking about in between Kirk Road and the property lines?
From here to this home, I've looked at it a couple times. It's about 120 feet.
120 feet? And that looks like it's the smallest or the least amount of space, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And so that the berm is closer to their property?
Yes.
So, I will, so this is where, the berm is where all these are. That's the top of the berm, and it's about a 745 elevation, with it being 740, so it's about a five-foot berm. And the fence is the X-line that is going along the front edge of this. And what we have incorporated is currently, this dash line represents the stormwater basin easement for Rose Hollow subdivision, which this is Lot 5, and there are four lots, three existing homes, one is vacant, which is this current one. And their detention is here. We are incorporating that detention in here, so we are able to eliminate haul-off from this project, and all dirt will be maintained on-site, and this berm is going to be constructed up here, and I cannot see that elevation. I don't remember how high it is. I feel like it goes up to
That's like 20 feet.
Yeah, it goes up to 760.
760 is the highest number I can read on there.
Yeah, 762 is the highest. Where, at the property lines there, it's about a 740, give or take, on the property directly behind it. So, this property has this berm that, at this point, is 20 feet taller.
And then, sorry for so many questions, but then along, where the possible alternate fence, would that be at the, at the base of the berm, then?
No, it's just on the other side. It's at the top of the berm, but on
On the other side, the other side of the Green Giant.
Correct.
Do you have that cross-section sheet?
We have the whole plan set, but I don't know.
I see. I just couldn't tell if that would be like at the bottom of the
It is page nine, so go back up to
Darker line with little x's in it.
One more.
There we go.
So, oops, at the bottom, Laura, of the
Go back up. Oops, go back up.
No, no, go down, down.
Keep going. There you go, stop.
Right there. So, right here shows the existing homes. This is the property line, and so this is the elevation of the property line. Then there's the top of the berm up here, which I mentioned was about five feet, and then you have Kirk Road up here with the basin down below.
Alderman Byrne has her sign, her hand up?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Rosato. Just kind of echoing what some of the other Aldermen said, I do like the idea of using the natural landscape to, for this. I'm not sure if I'm in favor of putting a fence, just because of the long-term maintenance. I do like the idea of if we need to, in the future, take a look at using additional funds to put in additional landscape in that area.
We have the two individuals who would like to make comments. The first one is Mr. Hoffman. I've enabled your microphone.
Hi, do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thanks, everyone. So, I'm the one that put that PowerPoint together, because when I moved here, you know, I really enjoyed spending a lot of time in the woods there. I really enjoyed them. You know, when I, when I moved in here, it was owned privately, but it wasn't really a piece of land that you could develop. So, I did not know the city's intention to build a stormwater, you know, facility, you know, there at a future date. But really, here's my thing. I want to partner with the city to make something nice. I see you've put a lot of time and attention into the details on natural prairie plants and, you know, things that are native to the area, which is really important to me, which is how I really designed my yard, and I take a lot of pride of ownership of my house and kind of, you know, if you look at that picture, you know, I saw the woods. That's kind of why I picked the house. I moved to Woodland Hills for the woods. This might be the last piece of wood that we have in Woodland Hills. It might just be a hill after that, but, you know, I, look, I know you guys have to do, you know, have to do this project, however, I'm just, I'm really concerned about the road noise, because I tried to show in my picture, my, you know, the grading where I live is a lot different than down the road, where y'all have been talking a little bit about people can put private fences up. I am significantly below Kirk Road. I mean, it is, it is up there. So, when I'm, when I'm looking out my, you know, my dining room window, Kirk Road, you know, in the wintertime, when I can see through the woods, it's, it's up there quite a ways. There's no way I could install a fence that's tall enough to mitigate any noise. And when the woods fill in, you know, I live at the thickest part, so I arguably have the most to lose here. You know, there is a significant amount, amount of noise mitigation that happens when those black walnuts, you know, get leaves on them, and yes, there's buckthorn and nasty stuff out there, and I, I go out there and clean some of it out. So, you know, I'm in favor of a healthy, you know, get rid of the invasive species and something that's healthy, however, you know, it's kind of like, it's 80% of my view for my house. It's all, it's all woods, and it really protects me from Kirk Road. And I, and I'm the one that found the dead body out there, which was, you know, kind of alarming. You know, so, I mean, that's why I kind of feel like a fence or a good buffer region is something important, because just walking out in those woods, you know, you don't, you don't want to see something like that. So, I go out there and clean out the pollution a lot of times. So, you know, really, yeah, really, my things boil down to, you know, noise pollution, the actual pollution itself, like, you know, cleaning up the trash that people throw at their cars. I go out in the woods and clean it up every spring, you know, keeping people out of our neighborhood, you know, from the bike path, which was, which is an alarming thing that I had to deal with.
Did he get muted?
Oh, sorry. Anyways, the view from my cul-de-sac is open. You know, I bought the house because it has a beautiful view and the trees, and there's no fences. So, anyways, I just want to keep it that way, and I, you know, I understand you guys have some work to do, but I, I'm hoping that we can, you know, partner together to kind of come up with the best alternative.
And next is Mr. Choffin. You may need to take yourself off mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I had one question. The, the plan that you have, the cross-section, where's that cross-section cut at?
Just to the, like, at the top of the page, the cross-section line is not shown on here, but it's just a smidge up of there.
Where does that go as far as Wintergreen Terrace? Is it north or south of Wintergreen Terrace?
It's north. You can see the line now in the arrows in your neighbor across the street's home.
Okay. As Mr. Hoffman had said, you know, we're significantly lower than the pavement elevation of Kirk Road, and the woods have always been a, you know, even in the wintertime, you know, the woods are dense enough that there's enough coverage, and just our concern is just the amount of noise that's going to be introduced in the neighborhood. I have a six-foot fence on the east side of my property. I put it up before you guys purchased the property, so I wasn't allowed to put up an eight-foot, but still, as a six-foot fence, I'm not going to see your five-foot berm, and I can still see most of Kirk Road. So, that's just our real concern, is trying to maintain the property values in the neighborhood, and just, you know, we don't want any more excess noise than, than is coming in now. And that's really our concern, is just keeping the noise down into the neighborhood, because the woods did provide a lot of a buffer. I do agree that this project is 20 years, you know, due. It should have been done a long time ago. I helped Mike O'Brien clean out his house once or twice from flooding. You know, I think the engineering company that did this did a very good job. As, you know, Zach had mentioned, our concern is just additional noise into the neighborhood, and thank you very much for listening to our concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Choffin. And also, Mr. Beckley would like an opportunity to speak. Mr. Beckley, I've activated your microphone.
Okay, thanks. Did everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. You know, I have the same concern for noise abatement. I'm a little further away from, I mean, a wider, even wider section than others are, so it's maybe a little bit lesser for me, but the main concern I have is, is we talk about the noise, and, you know, and I've done a number of capital projects in my, my time, and I have not seen anything that, that starts with a, here's where we are today, or a baseline for noise. We talk about, hey, we'll fix it later on if it's, you know, if it's not as good as it was before. I don't, I've not seen anything factual that discusses what the noise level is today, whether it's wintertime, summertime, and so on. You know, we talk about, you know, well, deciduous trees don't do as good a job because the leaves fall down, you know, and they, you know, then it's worse in the wintertime, but I've not seen any factual information. And one of my concerns is, you know, is, you know, we may not come to terms on whether or not it's as good as it was, if we don't have any sort of baseline information or an assessment that's been done.
Ultimately, I think, goes down to the responsibility for noise mitigation, and the city is ultimately not responsible for noise mitigation for Kirk Road. And we're, we're taking on the responsibility for stormwater, because our residents are directly being impacted, and I realize that the discussion tonight, residents will directly be impacted by noise as well. But, but the reason why we haven't done any sound studies, or we haven't explored an engineering sound barrier, is because ultimately Kirk Road and sound mitigation from Kirk Road is the county's problem, and we need to
It's my problem.
We need to look at the total dollars that we have, and stormwater was, was decided to be the priority. And again,
Well, then, then let's say that in the proposal, that we, we're not the least bit interested in noise mitigation, and we're not going to do anything about it.
Then we wouldn't have all of the trees planned that we do. They're not there for beautification of the area. They are actually there for the purpose of providing a sound barrier.
Again, again, against what's baseline. You know, it's, it's a, you know, it is a, is an attempt, I agree, to, to deal with the issue, but it doesn't get to the issue. I mean, I'm abundantly clear two things. One is, is we don't have a, you know, an assessment that says, here's, here's what the noise is today, so we can't agree to whether or not it's the same or better, or whether or not we should plant more trees. And the second point I'm abundantly clear on is, is Kane County isn't taking down the forest, Batavia is. And so, you know, so the change is being made by the city of Batavia. Everybody agrees that this is a project that should be done. You know, there's not a single person, if you look at all the emails on there, nobody says we shouldn't be concerned about our neighbors and about mitigating the, you know, the, the impact of water flowing through there, but I don't look at, at having a real assessment and then having a standard at which we set ourselves to remediate to being set. I don't think these are mutually exclusive. We don't have, we haven't done any measurement, because we're saying it's, it's Kane County's problem, yet we're going to, we're going to adulterate the current circumstances there without having a, you know, a standard for which we're trying to get back to. We're not measuring. You can't, you can't manage what you don't measure.
It goes back to overall project goals and the need to balance and prioritize goals, and stormwater was given the highest priority, and naturalization of the basin was given a higher priority, so we can mitigate streambank stabilization and plant native plantings. And we did not disregard sound. We did not disregard aesthetics. We put in a berm, we proposed the evergreen plants, you know, so we tried to balance all the various factors. You may not agree with that balance, but we tried to address everyone's concerns as best we could and still accomplish as many goals as we could.
I understand. This is Zach. Let me, let me, let me mention one thing about that, though. If we don't ever establish a baseline, then we're never going to be able to say, hey, we do need to put a fence in. This was, this was a great idea for, for, you know, it accomplished the goal of mitigating stormwater surge. However, it's gotten a lot noisier for all the residents here. If we don't even take a test or a baseline, we have no, you know, how are we ever going to say later, we need to put a fence in? You're going to say, well, what do you mean, it's louder than it used to be?
I guess that's up to City Council, whether they feel that later on, they need, you know, test results to decide to put a fence in, or if, you know, through, what kind of data am I trying to think of? Through data from the neighbors, through data from comments, through data from their own observations, council gathers enough information to decide that they need to go back in and put in a fence. That's really up to City Council, if you, if you need, need hard numbers, or if, you know, analytically, you're going to go out there later on and feedback from the neighbors and yourselves to decide whether you can put in a fence.
That, that would weigh more for me personally, and we would have an extra $60,000 that we didn't pay in consulting fees to spend on trees or fence or whatever we decided to do.
I'd be, I'd be much happier spending that money on trees
Right.
And plantings. Excuse me, than I would be spending it on a study to go out and try to figure what our baseline is. Is that baseline going to be at 1:00 a.m. when there's no other noise out there? Is it going to be at noon when everybody is out on the road? Is it going to be at the highest trucking point? So, then do we have to figure out what the traffic patterns are on Kirk Road so we can develop what a baseline's going to be? I mean, that could be a giant study in and of itself, just to do that. I'd rather spend that money on putting plantings out there and try to redevelop, you know, what's invasively took over out there over the last 30 years. Dan, go ahead.
And I'm trying to be, oh, boy, as diplomatic as I can here. I bought a townhouse with woods behind me, and I can see Fabian Forst, or Fabian, and Randall Road from my house. I have a minimal expectation of the amount of road noise I'm going to hear from time to time. It's not going to be canceled out ever. My windows are typically closed. When I sit outside, I recognize that there's going to be a certain amount of noise that comes, and I recognize also that there are some residents who, when they bought their homes, there was a cover. I'm curious in staff's, in staff's opinion, is the noise substantial for, for a lot of residents, or is this a, a sort of a one-off situation where we have to be very creative?
I mean, there is a four-lane, 55 mile an hour road that runs literally, you know, 100 feet from these homes, so I'm going to say there's several homes there that experience, you know, noise, road noise. I mean, and it's heavy truck noise, too, going up and down Kirk Road.
Evidence that people have themselves installed fences.
be? I mean, that could be a giant study in and of itself just to do that. I'd rather spend that money on putting plantings out there and try to redevelop, you know, what's invasively took over out there over the last 30 years. Dan, go ahead.
And I'm trying to be, oh, boy, as diplomatic as I can here. I bought a townhouse with woods behind me. And I can see Fabian Forst, or Fabian, and Randall Road from my house. I have a minimal expectation of the amount of road noise I'm going to hear from time to time. It's not going to be canceled out ever. My windows are typically closed. When I sit outside, I recognize that there's going to be a certain amount of noise that comes. And I recognize also that there are some residents who, when they bought their homes, there was a cover. I'm curious in staff's, in staff's opinion, is, is the noise substantial for, for a lot of residents? Or is this a, a, a sort of a one-off situation where we have to be very creative?
I mean, there is a four-lane, 55 mile an hour road that runs literally, you know, 100 feet from these homes. So I'm going to say there's several homes there that experience, you know, noise, road noise. I mean, and it's heavy truck noise, too, going up and down Kirk Road.
Evidence that people have themselves installed fences.
Well, as evidenced, yes. South of Pine Street, everyone south of Pine Street has installed a fence, with the exception, I think I saw today, one or two properties that maybe the whole length don't have a fence.
And I will add that this project is located at the low point. So if you are a vehicle that is not cruising faster than the speed limit, you may have to hit the accelerator to get back up the hill on both ends. So obviously, when you accelerate, that also causes extra noise. But I think it's, I've been out there, I was out there with the residents. I mean, it wasn't any different than I would have anticipated for what type of roadway it is.
Thank you.
Alderman Lehman?
What would it take to get into the plans more trees and vegetation to bring back to us and show us?
The plans are completed, and any changes would be a field change at this point.
That's something that can be done. I mean, as Andrea has said, that's definitely something we can look into. I, again, I think it was Alderman Wolf that said, or maybe I can remember, you know, dots on the plan look a little different than what's actually out in the field. So I think, I think the time to assess, you know, tree planting is, is when it's occurring. You know, we'll get out there, we'll look. I don't think anyone is opposed to, you know, here's a space where we really could use another hardwood tree, or here's 10 feet where we really need some more arborvitae's. I don't think anyone is opposed to adding those.
And just to let everybody know that the hatching on here are different types of planting. So on the top of the hill, it's going to be a prairie mix, which is kind of like what the hills on the other side of Kirk Road and Fermi's property has. And then on the bottom, parts of this are under, as I mentioned, under the Army Corps jurisdiction. So we do have to replace them back to wetland plantings. And those are the plugs that are on the bottom.
And this can be an iterative process. It doesn't have to be, come August of 2022, everything's done and we never do anything more out there. It can be something that, you know, we look at and then over the course of the next couple of years, if we need to continue to enhance, we can continue to enhance.
Anybody else? I think the focus of our issue here has been the flooding. And I think we got to keep on that path. And I know there are some obstacles on this. Is there any way we could put that berm any higher, Gary?
No. As designed, it reaches, I don't know what the exact calculated detention volume is, but that was designed for the amount of volume. They wanted to have end reductions flowing out of there. So our standards are four to one on the slope. So that's what our consultants designed the berm to and the basin to get that volume. So it's kind of set. And then right now, all the earthwork is balanced. So it would be a little bit of an undertaking to evaluate looking at that any further.
Okay. Any other? Alderman Beck?
Perhaps, and you said in August, this was going to be picking off, or?
No, I just threw out that date because we're going to be doing earthwork throughout the spring months, and then you're going to get into the summer. So it all depends when plantings will occur out here, timing wise. But towards the end of the year sometime, we're going to be, going to finish with this project. So-
Do you think maybe you and V3 would be willing to, maybe we could do a field trip out to the basin and say, like, this is a naturalized basin, and here's what they did here, and here's what they did here, and here's why. And like, so we could kind of get-
Absolutely. I will say, multiple consultants have given V3 accolades. They put a bunch of projects in their bid that are all of these nature. And I've talked to other municipalities. Again, they couldn't say, give them enough accommodations for what they have done. Even Logan from H.R. Green, who has done this, he said, you know, when we were going out bidding, if you get a V3, you're going to be happy. So, you know, and we have Baxter and Woodman selected for our engineering construction services, and they said the same thing. They just finished working on a project with V3. I think they absolutely would love to show this off once the project is completed as well.
And just to clarify, probably all the money flows to the same pockets. But, but on paper, the V3 contractors and V3 engineers are two separate corporations. So they are two separate companies. Again, all the money's probably flowing in the same place, but they are separate companies.
If you go to V3's website, we are their cover photo, too. Right on here, picture of, picture of the, of the Riverwalk.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to throw my two cents on the table here. I think this is a project that our engineering department spent a lot of time and effort on. It needs to get going. It needs to get done. And I guess what I would like to maybe see us do is, is that we'll call this Phase One. And that when the current work gets done, that we agree that we will commit this to another discussion a few months after it's over, when everybody can then see what the impacts of it are, and potentially, you know, talk about berms or trees or whatever it is further that needs to be done there. But I mean, this water thing needs to be addressed. And, you know, I don't think that water thing's going to get any better with what Fermi Lab's doing across the street. If anything, Fermi Lab's going to be shipping more water. And we've certainly tried to encourage them to do a few things on their side of the street to kind of slow down that flow then there. But I, there's, this thing is not easily decided tonight. I mean, I think there's, this needs a discussion, a commitment that we're not done with this, for the residents' benefit, that we will be back after the first phase is done to see what is done. And, you know, I think our engineers here have done a nice job. And certainly, the two that are in the room with this, in my opinion, certainly understand this and realize what is the problems and what maybe we can do as we move forward.
Yes, I agree. Anybody else?
I would like to add that the reason that this project was bid when it was is the nature of removing trees. Most contractors want to do it when the ground is frozen, they're not blooming. So that is the first goal on this project. And then we will see where, that takes us season-wise, if the ground's still too frozen to be doing earthwork. If not, then I know V3 is eager to get moving and moving dirt. We still have a few permits to get finalized now, especially, one of them is waiting because we had to pick the contractor. But weather will play a big factor if we can get this all completed in the spring. Or, as Gary mentioned, if we hit that window, then we have to wait to do the plantings in the fall.
Mr. Toffin has his hand up again. You can unmute your microphone, Mr. Toffin.
He must be on mute still.
On mute, sorry. Thank you very much. I just had two questions. And Andrea, I think you touched a little bit on it. Number one, when is this project going to start? And number two, seeing that Wintergreen Terrace is going to be the major access point for all the construction equipment, what kind of heavy construction equipment is going to come down the road and be in this area doing earthwork?
I will be sending out a notice as soon as we finish with city council meetings and then have a discussion with V3 to figure out timing. I do want to let all the residents know. And our street division will be putting signs out as well on Kirk Road to notify people that this project is coming up. So as soon as I have a better idea, I will definitely pass that around to all of you that live right there. And the equipment will be probably hauled in on low boys and then go through the power poles at the end of the cul-de-sac onto the property. At this point, I don't envision a ton of storage on the actual street. And I have called out for, if anything, I just wanted it on the north side of Wintergreen at the end of the cul-de-sac for any staging.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Hoffman has his hand raised.
All right, thank you. You guys put a lot of effort in. Andrea, thanks for taking some time to talk to me. You know, I know you guys have put a lot of thought into this project. Here's my question. So, you know, if I want to keep some of the trees, or, you know, like, who, who should I talk to about kind of, kind of saying, here's the ones I planted, and these are posts of easement? Like, do we need to have property surveys done before the work commences? Or is the city going to do that?
As I had discussed with you on the phone, I will schedule some time to come out there with you and possibly have Scott Haynes, who's our arborist, come out as well at the same time. And we have a pin finder. If we need to bring it, we can.
Cool. Are there any other programs that, you know, there's, there's a lot of programs to get, like, trees. You know, a lot of cities, you know, provide, like, trees for your, you know, your easement through your yard at a discounted rate. Does that come from the state? Is that, is that something we could ever access besides the arbor funds?
We, we fund that program ourselves through our general fund. It's not through any state monies. And traditionally, it's always been the Parkway Tree Program along public right-of-ways. It has traditionally not been used for an application like this in a rear yard.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
And I'd like to make a motion to move to City Council Resolution 2214-R authorizing execution of a contract with V3 Construction Group for Mahoney Creek Tributary Detention Basin, an amount not to exceed $765,930, which includes a 10% contingency amount.
Second.
Motion made by Rosado, second by Saron. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantin?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Saron? I mean, sorry, Youwer first.
Aye.
Trying to get through this. Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Ann Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. 14 to 0. Motion carried.
And for the second part, I'd like to make a motion to move to City Council Resolution 2215-R authorizing execution of Task Order Number Nine with Baxter and Woodman for the Mahoney Creek Tributary Detention Construction Engineering Services, in the amount not to exceed $57,300.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Alderman Saron. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantin?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Youwer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Ann Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Up next is item number 12, which is Resolution 22-16-R authorizing execution of Task Order Number Eight with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for the GIS, GPS, Stormwater Utility Field Data Collection, in the amount not to exceed $49,632. Alderman Rosado?
Yes. This is needed just to fill in the gap for the city's GIS stormwater system. So we're up to date on mapping. Andrea, do you have anything to add on that?
Last year, we started with this, and it was budgeted in the IS budget. We put it out for professional services. And Baxter and Woodman was our selected consultant based on their qualifications and the cost. They worked hand-in-hand with both engineering and the IT department. And we just went out to seek out their professional services this year. And we know last year, we had some unknown structures in there. So we were able to utilize all our budget and had to come back. And we will look at that. We did budget a contingency amount in here. And our total overall is $75,000 budgeted. And we're just looking to spend a little under $50,000 at this point. We'll see where this takes us. And if we have additional funds left, we will continue tackling other areas of town. But with this, we will have a majority of the northeast portion of Batavia surveyed in, in our database, which will be amazing for all of us, engineering, streets. It's been a long time coming. So we are very excited about this.
Any questions? Anybody care to make a motion?
Still moved. Saron.
Second, Sofa.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Saron, second by Alderman Sofa. Roll call.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantin?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
And Youwer?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right, thank you. Up next is item 13, Resolution 2217-R authorizing execution of contract with NCAP Incorporated for the 2022 annual maintenance of naturalized drainage areas, in the amount not to exceed $67,040. Alderman Rosado?
Yes, currently, we're in a third year of our three-year contract on maintenance with NCAP. We're looking to expand the work that they're doing and adding some tasks to that. Andrea, do you want to add comment to that?
Sure. We've had a contract with NCAP for a while. I think it dates back to 2017. But we do go out every three years for a renewable contract. This time around, we are coming up to the end of the terms on the Wood, or Windmill Lakes Detention Basin over on Main Street, near the Tower Car Wash and Holy Cross, which the city owns the basin, but the Conservation Foundation has been managing. And then we passed through the bills. But since we have established this annual maintenance program, we are adding that to our list. And we've had some other pieces of property come in this last year as well. So typically, we've been able to have it under the amount that needs to come forward to council. But now with those added pieces, we are exceeding that amount. And after this year, we will be putting this out in probably like July, August, to get some bids for both our annual, all of the basins that are listed in the memo on the agreement, along with Brayburn Marsh. Because Brayburn will be up for their renewal notice as well. And since I just mentioned it, V3 is a current consultant on that contractor. And they did let us know that they are planning to do a berm this spring. So obviously, weather-dependent notices will go out and signs will be out on Randall Road for that. But NCAP has done great work, and they have always prepared lists to let us know what needs to be done. And just, I believe they actually were out today doing some stuff out on Randall Road. So that is all I have.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
One item, if I can.
Yes, Gary?
I'll jump on my soapbox that I occasionally jump on. One of the common sales pitches amongst those that promote native and naturalized basins, and we have a couple of native and naturalized basins that used to be a mess when they were traditional basins. And so we naturalized them, and they are fantastic now. There is a place for these. The Windmill Lakes is a great example of a, of a high-quality wetland. So there's, I'm not disparaging the fact that there's a time and a place for these that are very appropriate and very good. But one of the sales pitches is that if you naturalize your basins, it'll cost you less money. It'll, you know, easier, easier to maintain. And I think the dollars and cents that we experience don't always bear that out. These are expensive to properly maintain and to properly husbandry and, and provide, you know, proper care for. It's worthwhile. But I, I don't think that if you go to a webinar and you just hear the generic pitch that we should naturalize everything, you'll save money. I, I don't think that's true.
Any other discussion?
I'll throw in one comment. I chatted with the folks down in Montgomery. They had really bad flooding problems. Was it 20 or 30? had really bad flooding problems, was it twenty or thirty years ago? So they put in the policy way back then that they would only do naturalized detention basins, and have been using, um, a contractor, the same contractor, for many years, who has kept a lot of data over time, and how his contract costs have gone down over time, that the city is paying to him to manage the basins. I was wondering if NCAP has kept any records like that for us of kind of a per-acre basis, you know, whatever their longest-running or our longest, uh, maintained basin is and how our costs have shifted over time.
We have only been doing this type on, um, a bunch of basins since about 2015, and those were with the contractors that had initially, um, installed those, because they typically had a three-year maintenance contract with, um, their construction contract. So I, I do have the prices that they have given me for them, and the contract that you saw in the memo is typical of what they have provided to me for each different item. Um, I do know that in 2020, when we had to do budget-saving measures, and one of the items we pulled were the native basins, um, there were comments that, you know, you can't really do that without a cost associated with it. While we were saving some money, some things weren't treated, so there was a little bit of extra work, um, to go back, but I think we may have the data. I have never asked NCAP, though.
I'd be curious to know.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll make a motion to move to City Council Authorization of Execution of the Contract with NCAP Inc. in the amount not to exceed $67,040 in Resolution 22017-R.
Second, Saron.
Motion by Rosado, second by Saron. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Youer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Ann Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried, fourteen to zero.
All right, thank you. Um, up next is item fourteen, which is the last city services one, Resolution 2218-R authorizing master services agreement with H.W. Lochner to provide structural engineering services. Alderman Rosado?
Yes, currently, H.W. Lochner handles all our bridge pres- preservation work, and this is just adding them to the master services agreement, so it's easier to do business with them. Um, any discussion? Questions?
I think it's kind of timely that we're talking about bridge maintenance and-
Right, I do too.
-structural surveys, so that, you know, we have a firm that we believe in, and we are doing a regular inspection on all the bridges and stuff that we maintain, so.
And we have been using H.W. Lochner for this, um, and they've been doing the inspections on the Wilson Street Bridge, as well as Deer Path Road Bridge and our parking garage structure. Um, but with the up, now that we have the bridge maintenance program, and then, um, where we're going to have people out here doing work on it, if there's some items that staff is unfamiliar with, we have, last year, when we did Wilson Street, we had them on contract or retainer to come out and look at it if need be. Um, and that was kind of our long-term thinking, as well as the Winding Creek Development's coming in, the Land Meyer property that is going to have a bridge, and we're going to need someone to be reviewing those plans, and also potentially, once that gets constructed, then be out there doing some construction services for us as well. So it's just easier if we have a task order that we can, um, have them sign.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody care to make a motion?
Still moved. Second, Youer.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Sofa, second by Alderman Youer. Roll call.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye, sorry.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Youer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ann Chantet?
Aye.
Motion carried, fourteen to zero.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next is Resolution 22-21-R, approving amendment to the pole attachment agreement with COMED to reduce annual fee for each power supply attached to COMED-owned poles. Alderman Saron?
Yes, uh, not often do we get, uh, to, uh, make a resolution to lower our costs, but, uh, the Illinois Commerce Commission's asked COMED to reduce its attachment fee, which will, uh, we don't do many. It'll net, uh, savings. Percentage-wise, it's great, but it's about $1,600 a, a year, so, uh, Gary, I don't know if you want to expound on that.
I don't really have any additional comments. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. It's a no-brainer. I would make a motion to approve Resolution 22-021-R approving amendment to the pole attachment agreement with COMED.
Second, Youer.
Roll call, please.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
And Youer?
Aye.
Motion carried, fourteen to zero.
All right, thank you. And for tonight's marquee discussion, customer self-generation-
Oh, yeah, good.
-and net billing draft policy.
So Laura, I think you need to-
Stop.
You need to shop, stop, and I'll need to start, right?
Yes.
This one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Must be resumed. There we go. I sent out a memo included in the policy pa- included in the packet, um, for discussion tonight on a net billing policy and self-generation, which really kind of comes out of the CEDR legislation. Um, as I stated in my memo, I really kind of envisioned tonight being more of a form of a workshop session, because there's a lot of background information to cover, probably a fair amount of Q and A, um, and then we can, as opposed to redlining the draft, um, more of the background tonight and, and information. So, um, one thing I want to start with, because I'm going to come back to it several times, again, this presentation, which is only eleven slides, came out of a forty-five to fifty-slide presentation that IMUA had given the city, and I took some of these slides and then even, um, edited them to make them more Batavia-specific. Specific? I don't know. Anyways, um, I want to touch on these few basic principles and then jump into, uh, larger picture. Energy is, you know, what's running the light bulbs right now, and obviously, within energy is a, is the components, if you will, and I'm trying to make it very simple, is electrons. So I, I'm going to speak in terms of electrons, because they're, they're, they're the components that are, you can speak of, um, just to make things a little easier. So customers will either export power out to us or import power from us. So what does that mean? Customers, being residential or small commercial, who install solar panels, wind generation, or if they choose to, to store, um, on their, on their, um, property, their own customer-owned property, they're going to generate electrons, and then their home or business is going to use electrons, use energy. And if the number of electrons produced by the solar panel is less than the amount of energy consumed by the home or business, then the electrons go from the solar panel into the home, and they never come out to us. If the number of electrons produced by the solar panel is more, then the home can't use all of them, so they become excess, and then they flow back out to the grid. So very simply, that what I just described would be exporting to the grid. Solar panels are producing more electrons essentially than the home needs. Importing, solar panels produce less electrons than the home needs, and very important, on those wires, electrons won't be flowing in two directions. They're either going to flow in one direction or the other, but not both at the same time. The physics is such that when the electrons flow out of the solar panels, and there's so many electrons that the home can't use them all, and there's excess electrons, they're going to flow out to the grid, and electrons are like water. They follow the path of least resistance. So in reality, the electrons are going to flow right next door, to the house next door, who's, who's going to use those electrons. Um, in the big picture, because now those electrons have gone to the house next door, the house next door is importing fewer electrons from us. We are importing fewer electrons from the big grid, the national grid, and therefore, we have more electrons left out on the national grid. So I, I, I'll go back to that again and explain that, but a lot of what I'm going to talk about tonight is from the grid perspective, not holes in wires in your neighborhood, but the national transmission grid, because that is kind of where the story starts. Um, neighbor, um, NIMPA, NIMPA has an agreement with Batavia to provide us with energy and capacity, uh, fifty-five megawatts of energy on a seven-by-twenty-four-by-three-sixty-five basis. So, energy is the thing that makes the lights turn on. Capacity is the thing that, when you go and you want to do your laundry, you're going to press the button on your washer, and you expect your washer to turn on immediately. You don't want to wait around ten minutes for your washer to turn on. You need to have the capacity in place to be able to turn on your air conditioner immediately, or if you're in the industry, to turn on the machine immediately. Um, so there's, at the big picture, nuclear plants, coal plants, natural gas fire plants are always running seven, seven-by-twenty-four. They're always running, and they're always pushing electrons out, and those electrons are always going to people who are consuming the energy. And again, that is, that's kind of in the big picture, the capacity is always there, so that consumers, people who use the energy, have instant access to it. That's energy, that's capacity. Um, over the transmission grid, there's a thing called congestion and losses. So if, if, if too many people are trying to use the same wires to go from point A to point B, those wires fill up with electrons, and there's a financial cost to that, because now the electrons need to be routed around, or they need to build more lines between point A to point B, because there's so much congestion. So there's, there's a cost associated with congestion. Losses is just what it's, what it means. Um, energy is lost to heat, so as you, as you go through components, you go through wires, you lose energy to heat. Um, so there are all these components at the national grid, and I, and I'm, I'm, I'm going back now. Remember, the, the neighbor next door got the electrons from the solar panel. That means the neighbor didn't buy electrons from the grid, from us, so we now have these electrons that we have to do something with, and what we do is we transact in the wholesale market, and we sell them back. They don't just disappear. You, 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 you get them off the grid, and it's all, it's financial transactions of purchasing energy, purchasing capacity, and selling it back. And, and, and so those are the various, um, wholesale energy market components, and we sell them at what's called a hub, which is really just a financial clearinghouse point. And we're in the PJM, a marketplace, and there's a Batavia hub, which is literally just a, a, a financial point within the marketplace. And so we, we contract, there's people who bring energy to the Batavia hub, and financially, we settle up there. You settle up day ahead, or you settle up in the real time, and an electron is worth so much money at three in the morning, and electron is worth so much money at three in the afternoon on a ninety-five-degree day. Uh, energy changes in its value. Um, again, you know, in the middle of a polar vortex, in the middle of wintertime, you might not expect energy to be expensive, but sometimes energy can be very expensive in the wintertime. Ninety-five degrees, like I said, on a summer day, energy can be very expensive. In the springtime, when people have their air conditioners off and their heaters off, and it's seventy-five degrees outside, we see in northern Illinois, energy prices go negative, where we literally have to pay money to put the electrons back into the system. It happens a lot in northern Illinois, because we have an abundance of generation. So all of that is happening at the wholesale market. Once it comes off the whole, uh, once it comes off the, the national grid, it comes onto our poles and wires. So our substations, our wires, and it goes through all of our equipment to get from the grid to our customers. And our rate structure, like many municipalities, we have a bundled rate structure. So we have certain costs that will exist regardless of whether an elec-, um, a customer uses one electron or not. If they want the, the, the luxury of being able to flip on the light switch and still be connected to the grid, to us, to a utility, then there are certain fixed costs which come with that. Metering, utility billing, administration, those costs never change. There are other costs that depend on how many of elec-, how many electrons that they use, and those costs then kind of bear upon the poles and wires and, and the alignment and the project, the substation projects, all of those things. So we have a bundled rate structure. I'm going to call, refer to it as kind of a retail rate structure. This is what, this is what you all pay for your energy. Then there's the wholesale side, like I just spoke of a minute or two ago. So there's a retail side, and there's a wholesale side. I'm going to jump back into this presentation, because this is, this can be, there's a lot here to digest. Currently today, we're using this example of a spinning meter. Now, this is an old-fashioned meter. Our meters today are all electronic, but the spinning disc provides a good visual for you to think about. Um, there's no more discs spinning in, in modern meters, but it's a good way to, to think about it. We, for our solar customers today, we have a bidirectional meter installed, and think about it with one disc that only spins in one direction, forward, and one disc that only spins in one direction, backward. And a disc spins backward when there's too many electrons, and those electrons are being exported out to our system. The second disc spins forward whenever there, there's electrons being imported. In other words, the house is using more electrons than the solar is producing. Think about it, you know, even during a summer day or even overnight. The way we're currently doing it is at the end of the month, we're taking those two readings, and we're basically just netting them together to come up with a composite kilo- kilowatt-hour charge or credit, and some months residents , uh, carry over a kilowatt-hour credit from month to month, and some months, they pay at the retail rate for the kilowatt-hour credit that they did, which was calculated using this net method. And so today, we're carrying over, Alderman Beck had asked about this, and I told her we're going to talk about it this week. Today, we're carrying over kilowatt-hour credits, uh, up to one year, from month to month. So one of the things we're talking about is changing the methodology, and it goes back to, if I'm the homeowner, I'm consuming electrons, and my solar panels are producing electrons. And if my solar panels, every electron that those solar panels produce, I get to use as a homeowner. And mean, the, the, the fact that I get to use those electrons means that I don't have to buy electrons from Batavia. So really, the value of those electrons are equal to Batavia's retail prices, because again, I don't have to buy them from Batavia. I get to use those electrons from my solar panels. If there is too many electrons, now I can't use them all, I'm going to push them out to Batavia's grid, where they're going to be used in reality next door, but also in- But also, in reality, what that ultimately means is that Batavia has extra electrons out in the wholesale market that we have to sell. Cuz that's, that's ultimately where they go to at the end of the math equation. Those electrons which get pushed back out to Batavia really only have a value equal to that wholesale transaction. They don't have a value equal to the retail prices that, that consumers are paying. Because remember, those retail prices that consumers pay include things like the linemen and the poles and the wires and the administrative costs and everything that goes into those retail prices. The value only really is realized when we, we, the city, have to sell those extra electrons back out in the wholesale market. The homeowner gets the value from their solar panels, they get to use their own electrons, those electrons have a value equal to what they would offset their costs, retail. But if they push a lot, extra electrons out to us, they're only really worth the wholesale. So, under a net billing, again, picture two discs, one spinning forward, one spinning backwards. At the end of the month, we get two different separate readings, one from each disc. And under a net billing, the customers bill at the retail rate for all imported energy. So, if their solar panels have produced enough energy, they've gotten the benefit of all those electrons from the solar panels and say they don't have to buy any energy from us. Again, they've offset their costs at the retail level. Essentially, the value of their electrons from their solar are retail value. Um, but if their solar panels don't produce, and I'm speaking just in terms of solar, there could be other forms of renewable, but let's just keep solar. If their solar panels don't produce enough electricity and they need to buy electrons from us, those are purchased at the retail bundled rate. If they push extra electrons out, which is reflected on the second disc reading, they will be credited at the fair credit kilowatt hour rate for all exported energy. Again, a dollar and cents now, as opposed to carrying kilowatt hours. This eliminates that monthly carryover of balances. I just made reference to a fair credit, so what is the fair credit? And the fair credit is occurring out on the wholesale marketplace. And there's a value to the electrons, a value to the energy. There's a value to capacity, transmission, congestion, and losses. So, the city has to pay a capacity cost based on our load. And that capacity cost is actually determined based on, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds, but based on a five CP, now, what the heck does that mean? There are really five critical days, and we don't know when those days will occur, but there's five critical days where, in our area of the PJM, the, the, the consumption of electricity is at its peak. And our, we're at our peak, so we're at our peak, and PJM's at a peak, and it's five days when those peaks are coincident. And then those five days are used to calculate how much capacity we're required to purchase. And the value of capacity is based on an auction that traditionally had been held three years in advance, although that's been kinda screwed up now. But there is a value to capacity already set via auction in the PJM marketplace. So, we have to purchase X amount of capacity, that's a calculation done annually, and that capacity has a value. And as I said earlier, transmission, congestion, losses, those are all things that are market-driven based on how many people wanna push electrons to point A and point B. And they're all PJM costs that all appear on our PJM bill. And when we sell extra electrons back out into the market because we can't use them, we get the fair credit. We get, we get essentially what's on this screen right now. And that's why, you know, we are advocating for a change to a net billing because residents will be pushing extra electrons to us. And if we give them the retail rate, that means that we're giving them more money for their electrons than we're even getting for their electrons. And that just hurts all the non-self-generating customers. So, this is really about balancing the rights between those customers that are self-generating versus those customers that are not self-generating, and making sure that we're being fair to all customers. So, again, we have a power sales agreement, we have to buy fifty-five megawatts of energy. That doesn't, that doesn't change. We, per the terms of our power sales agreement, we always have to have that much energy. We don't use all that energy. Our annual megawatt hours, we sell back into the market. There are days, there are times, there are hours where we need more than fifty-five megawatts. There are times when we need less. During those times where we need more, and if a solar customer's producing more, that's, that is a benefit to the city, and, and the solar customer should, should be reflected of, of, of that benefit. On the other hand, when there's times when we're paying and the prices have gone negative and the solar customer is giving us even more energy, that's not a benefit to us. So, I've gone through a lot of this already. I wanna jump to this page. What we're proposing is the value of these electrons at the wholesale market, that they be, that they be, um, quantified based on the LMP, which is a locational marginal price. Actually, the, the, the market price, if you will, of electrons, of the capacity, of the transmission losses, congestion. And that we look at those things on an annual basis, and we come up with, you know, what, what our cost is. Peak days are gonna cost more, negative days are gonna cost less, and we, we kinda annualize that. Um, today, we have thirty-two solar customers, uh, so not very many. But with the new legislation, there's no limit on how many we could have. So, we need to come up with a methodology that is straightforward, um, that, that is fair, and that we can do without, you know, again, without having to go through, um, very complicated calculations every week. Or, or for our largest customers, just for your reference, for our, our market-based customers, uh, this is done in a five-minute interval with PJM, time of day rate. So, I mean, you're literally going through these calculations every five minutes. Ultimately, what it would boil down to was this average annual LMP, capacity, transmission, losses, come up with a total credit value at a kilowatt per hour rate. And again, that would be the credit rate that would be paid to customers on the same bill that we're charging them for the use of any, any power. So, there'll be a charge, there'll be a credit, no more monthly carryover of balances. They could ultimately end up with a credit, um, but it, I mean, again, it just be, it depends how the, the math works out on their bill. So, I'm gonna stop there, that was a ton of information for, for questions to at least get this concept out there.
Have you turned down, um, residents who are interested in getting solar panels? In the past, there's only thirty-two homes. How rapidly are you getting requests for people to install solar?
So, up until the state legislation, we had a two percent system limit.
Right, yeah.
And so far, we haven't had requests, uh, that would exceed the two percent. We ended up with, after we did our, our Suncast, we had what we estimated to be about another three or four years of, at the current rate,
Okay.
Three or four years of, of requests from customers.
Okay.
So, we have not reached even what was our two percent threshold yet.
Okay. There's a question.
So, um...
I'm sorry, can you come up and...
We'd have to have you use the mic, sir.
And can you give your name, Bob?
Yeah, uh, my name is Bob Flora, and I'm here to represent the, uh, solar customers. And so, I have a number of questions, very good presentation. Um, oh, a couple of questions, anyway. Uh, first of all, my question is...
You can do that one.
Okay, okay, I got one here, okay, go. The retail price is approximately thirteen or fourteen cents, is that correct?
Today, our current retail price is approximately, right, yeah.
Okay, so my question is, and I, I actually, I sent you an email and, yeah. So, you know what the question is, you're coming. How much of the thirteen cents, let's say, is, um, is used in the retail, of the retail price, is used to bind, to get electricity to the Batavia hub? In other words, including all of these costs? Well, and, and, including all the costs, how much of the, how much of that is to get electricity to the hub?
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sir, I need to interrupt you, you need to speak into the microphone because everybody else that's online can't hear you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Gary will hear you from the PA inside here, so just stay right in front of the microphone. Yeah, just stay right in front of that microphone.
Okay, fine. Okay, how much of the thirteen cents is used to purchase electricity at the hub, including all the costs, transmission, capacity, and congestion, as well as the LMP? And how much is used to support all of the Batavia's electric infrastructure?
So, that's kinda the, the question goes to the breakdown of our bundled rate. And that, that, I don't have, just to be able to tell you today that seven cents go to this and six cents goes to that. Cuz into the bundled rate goes personnel and capital costs and maintenance costs and administrative costs. And on the other side of the equation, the getting the electrons to Batavia also constantly changes from day to day. That's why I was saying, we're gonna try and, try and come up with some sort of annualized cost. Uh, NIMPA's cost to members has been in the, um, convert units to me, has been in the five and a half, six cents, um, range. That's NIMPA's cost to members. That does not include some of these other components like we're talking about, the transmission losses, the congestion, and that, and, and those numbers. So, um, I can't even remember even what, what the exact number was IMUA had in their presentation. It's six, and it's in the six cents range here, right? Um, a little bit over six cents. I, 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 I would imagine it's gonna be somewhere in that neighborhood. Six cents, seven cents, eight cents would be my, would be my, just my, my guess when the calculation is made.
Okay, that's the cost to get the electricity to the hub?
That's the cost to get the, the, that's the cost we would be paid when we sell back. Cuz that's, that's the cost ultimately that we're trying to determine is, when we have extra electrons and we're selling them back into the, to the wholesale marketplace, how much money are we gonna get from? They are worth what they're worth, basically, at that point. Um, we need to get rid of them because we can't, we can't put the electrons anyplace else. They get sold back, and that's the only value that they have, is that wholesale value.
Right, okay.
That's, that's, that's what that cost would, would represent.
Okay, so, is it fair to say that approximately half of the thirteen cents goes to support the Batavia grid, the Batavia's grid? And half goes to get the electricity?
Uh, half towards purchase power, half towards, um, I don't know if it's quite that percentage, but, but, but I, and I can follow back up to get a better value for you, but, but let's just go with that for discussion points.
Okay, so roughly, it's, it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we...
Yeah, roughly, it, it's, it's half.
Okay.
Uh, it's half, okay, fine. Um, so, one other very minor question, actually, is, uh, back here, you said something about, um, because it's net billing, there wouldn't be a carryover. But suppose there is, in fact, extra credit due at that point, would then that be credited back to the customer?
Maybe I shouldn't have said there wouldn't be any credit. Cuz if it's a dollar credit, if it's actually dollars and cents, it would just appear as a credit. Now, Batavia has a bundled bill, so it's not just an electric bill that you receive, it's also a water bill and a sewer bill. And so, you, it would have to be a large enough credit to actually overcome all those other expenses for it to be a really, truly a credit. It's gonna, if you have too much money in your electric pu-, uh, bucket, you may just end up using it towards your water bucket, you know?
Yeah, sure.
In the end, you're still gonna write a check, it's just you write a less, lesser check.
Online, they asked if I could repeat the question. And so, the question was, under net billing, um, what would happen if the customer is always ending up with the, this credit on their bill? Um, and we're only talking about the electric utility, so any, um, credits could also be applied to the other charges that are on a utility bill. Or a, you know, a point could be established where, you know, if, if it reaches an X dollar, then certainly a customer would have the option of us giving them that money back.
Yeah, and, and it's because we produce a composite bill, you, we're not just a ComEd producing just an electric bill. We're ComEd, Nycor, you know, all, Fox Metro, all in one.
Right.
Here at the city.
I have a question, Gary. Does that happen a lot where people who own solar panels produce a lot more electricity than what they need and they get these large credits?
So, we have, as I'm balancing and dropping things on the floor, but that's okay. We have thirty-two solar customers today, and the question was, do we have a lot of customers that carry over balances? And I've got the page right here. We have one, two, three, four, so out of those thirty-two, we have four customers who annually, maybe you call it five customers, who annually produce so many electrons with their solar system that they essentially end up with zero or a credit. So, with the answer to your question, do we have a lot of people who constantly get lots of credits? The answer to that question is no.
Okay.
Most solar customers...
Are, most solar customers are still net consumers of elec-, of electricity.
There, there's a lot of solar panel companies out there right now soliciting people that it will not only pay your electric bill, but you'll have a surplus. I mean, that, that's common, I don't know about everybody else, but I probably get two calls a day.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to that issue. Um, under the new state legislation, I'm sorry, you've got a poll here. Under the new state legislation, we cannot limit the number of solar customers who wish to put solar on their wind, on their roof. Today, we have thirty-two, we could have three hundred and twenty, there's no limit to that. But the legislation does speak to the fact that it's meant for customers to generate their own self-needs. So, from a, from a residential standpoint, that's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy because in order to get a ten kilowatt or a twenty kilowatt system requires X square footage for the solar panels. And if your house isn't that big, you, you can't put solar panels, you know, anywhere else. I mean, then you only have so much room to put them.
Right.
Um, there are, there are some homes that have, have, you know, optimized the east and the west and the south facades, and they've gotten fairly large size systems. And there's other homes where they may have the south facade as their front facade, and they say, I don't want that on my front facade, but I'll put it on my west facade, and that gives me a five kilowatt system. It's not a very big system, but at least I'm doing something, so.
Right, okay.
It, it's kind of self-limiting on residential homes because of the roof area.
Okay.
I have solar, oh, sorry.
No. Juan, I wanna say thanks for the, the graphics and colors and highlights in your, your thing. Obviously, you were thinking of me while you were designing this. Um, there's nothing in the legislation that dictates how we have to charge because in an open market, we're not a buyer. We, we don't wanna buy any, so why can't we set it at zero? Other than the, the, the conscious effort of encouraging people to, to do this, but they're doing it for, to create their own electricity, not to be an, an electric power provider.
So, I mean, ultimately, that could come down to a policy decision. There's, there's this notion of this fair credit because...
Right.
Because those excess electrons that make their way back out into the wholesale grid, and the city sell, the city does sell them, and we do get revenue from them. We don't, we need more power like a hole in the head, I understand that. Um, and there are days where we have so much excess power, we're just selling it back. And if these people keep giving us more electrons, we really don't need them. But we are selling them back, and we are getting some credit for them at the wholesale market. That, there are part we can't deny, that they do have some, these are electrons that came from a solar panel, not that we bought, they came from a solar panel, and now we get the benefit of selling them back at the wholesale market. So, that's, that's the thought.
I get that, but, uh, just for debate's sake, the other side is, there's value that if their solar panels go down, they know they can flip a switch and we're there for them. There's a... There's a value to be hooked to the grid, that they may not, like, to expect that they get something for everything that they, they produce, um, yet expect that when they don't produce, that we're there for them, is, uh, I, I don't know, it, it's...
I get it.
Just debate's sake wise.
You're going right at what the heart of this net billing is versus doing net metering, is the net metering was, um, giving as much value to what was being pushed out into our system as we were charging back for the times when they needed to utilize our electrons. I think what they could have in this, in the statute said, this is, this is what you pay for the self-generation that comes back onto your system. I think they contemplate that everybody's got a, a variety of different contracts that establish what they're paying for various things, and they're trying to say, listen, you've got to be fair about it, and therefore, you must take into consideration these four things, and you come up with it, and, and you're going to have to justify how you establish that fair credit. And, and Mr. Flores' initial questions were aimed at just that, to say, you know, where does that, where does that number come from?
Right. So, through all this, I mean, do you have a, a recommendation? I mean...
So, that...
To get fourteen people to agree on a price for markets, it's going to be a nightmare.
Yeah, and, and, and so the, the price, the market price isn't going to be something we have to debate. The market price will come to us from actual real market data from P G M. So that's actually going to be real energy cost, real capacity transmission cost, those are going to be real costs right on our P G M bill. So this fair credit could be calculated based on a year's worth of those costs. There's really, that's kind of black and white. Um, the, the policy decision is whether you want to go away from the net metering poli- net metering philosophy, in which case, essentially, for every electron that's being exported, we're paying them the full retail price, or the net billing, which says, there's a full retail price for the electrons that we're bringing to them, but the electrons that they give to us only have a value of what we can sell them for, and that's the wholesale price. So the net billing is a retail wholesale model, the net metering was a retail retail model.
And this perhaps is not, uh, the most important consideration, but I think that it bears mentioning, I think Gary, you may have also mentioned this, our utility billing department has to do calculations for the net metering. They would not have to do those calculations if we changed to net billing, because there are two numbers that come off the meter, and we apply the rates to those, and we're done. As opposed to establishing, you know, doing the, the math equation of what the net is between those two numbers, and then having to, having to manage a book of credits.
So, just to clarify, because now that I, I think about it, if, if a home uses one hundred units, um, the first hundred that they produce is, is a net wash, basically.
Right. That bill would be zero.
Are we talking only about the excess, or are we talking about, hey, if we're going to charge them, well, no, it's got to be only for excess, right?
We're talking about only the excess that gets, comes back into our system. So there's a certain amount that they're generating and they're using. The only thing that comes out to the meter is excess of what, uh, they didn't need and they pushed out to us.
Yeah, we're only going to meter that wire that goes between the home and the grid, our grid. So if they need extra electrons, we'll meter that, and if they push out extra electrons, we'll meter that. But, but the meter, the electrons that flow from their solar panels to their home, we're not metering that, so that is, they're getting...
Right.
And they're not having to purchase electrons from us, they're essentially getting full retail value for those electrons.
Right, good point.
Because they're not having to buy them from us.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't care how much they're, we really only care about what's coming back to us or what's, what's coming from us.
Right.
Abby?
Um, I have a question, maybe for Mr. Flora. I remember when you were here before, when net metering was on, was a discussion point many years ago, um, you had done some fin- you'd done some financial analysis, is that correct? The, you had done some financial analysis based on the new net metering policy many years ago, and I was just wondering from your perspective, you know, with a net metering, a net billing cost of six cents per kilowatt hour, you know, what does that do to, um, a homeowner's propensity to put solar on their homes, financially speaking, from, from what you've, you've calculated?
Right, okay. That, that is a good question. Um, that, that, um, is quite a shock, actually. Um, actually, it, it, it's not, it's not, uh, uh, electricity is not a big fraction of, of, uh, our, our, our costs, homeowner's costs, but it's a substantial one, and certainly the, um, the, uh, solar people have invested in the, in their solar panels, and they've expected one for one. Uh, I certainly understand the very, uh, specific, uh, considerations that Gary has presented, which are, which are very, very, uh, true, uh, considerations, very, uh, pertinent considerations. Um, but that, that is, you know, that's, that's, it's quite, quite a shock to have it cut in half, um, when we expected, and, and not only, not only to existing customers, but future customers. Future customers are going to really, really look twice when they see that they're not getting net billing. Uh, net, no, I'm sorry.
Sir?
Metering, get it right.
Sir, we need you to have the microphone up closer, we cannot hear you online.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's, it's okay. You're, you're going to hear yourself in the background, but the people that are online just can't hear you.
Okay, oh yeah, now I can hear myself, okay, right. Um, yeah, so, um, uh, what I propose is, I would like to make a presentation, um, and, and answer some of those questions. Uh, they're very good questions. Um, uh, future customers are really going to be dismayed by such, such a move. Uh, so I think there, there's a lot of considerations, uh, it is complicated. Uh, I would like to make a presentation next week, if that's possible. Um, I'll, I'll prepare it and, and make a, a thorough presentation.
I'd like that.
And Gary, if you could get that, that number for me?
Can I get your numbers?
Yeah.
And I'm going to jump in here too, again, everyone can hear me now. Um, so one point out of the legis- uh, legislation, Alderman Beck, and that is, again, the intention is for customers to generate to meet their own self-needs. So if a customer has sufficient solar on their roof, so that all those electrons flow from the solar panel into their home, they're still getting a hundred percent of the retail value for those electrons. The legislation is not set up for them to become exporters of energy and start getting money, because if we're paying them the retail rate for that export, that one-to-one, that retail rate, we're paying them for things that they didn't incur, costs that they didn't incur. Our bundled rate incur, includes costs that the, the generator, the solar person doesn't incur. The solar person does not have alignment on their roof, the solar person does not have a, a substation project. The electrons that they push out to us are only worth to us what we can sell them for at the market. And so, to benefit all those people who aren't generating, we need to be fair and, and pay what those electrons are actually worth to us, not more than what they're worth to us. Because if we pay more than what they're worth, we basically cost, that cost flows to everybody else.
It's something that they discovered in California, which has the highest installation of, um, solar amongst all of its residents. I think it's somewhere about twenty percent of the customers in California have solar, and they found that there was such a shift of cost from those who had solar generation to shifting these fixed costs onto the others in the system, that they have actually legislated to switch to net billing versus net metering.
Gary, didn't your memo last week say that, will we be able to put an ordinance, you know, put in our policy that we, you can only generate a hundred and five percent of your capacity, or...
So we will, in this policy document that's for consideration tonight, I've left it blank, uh, because internally, we're still trying to work through what a, what a number should be. But we will limit through the policy that council adopts, that residential homes will have, you know, a, a, a s- maximum capacity of X number of kilowatts, and if somebody wants a system larger than that, because they actually consume more than that, and therefore, in accordance with the requirements of the state law, they would be entitled to a system larger than that to meet their own self-needs, then, then they could, they could do that. But generically, we want to get a value on there that, that's the system limit, and then if people need higher than that, they can come to us and ask for it. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it, why is it a kilowatt hour max? Like, my house, my house might be a thousand square foot, and somebody else's might be three thousand, so to assign one kilowatt to both of, you know, what limit to both of us, instead of a percentage of what we would normally use?
Well, that gets to, that gets to, again, if we have three hundred customers, we're doing three hundred calculations. So, we need, we need a, a reasonable maximum that's going to cover ninety-five percent of residential customers, and back to what Alderman Rosado was saying, if we set that maximum such that we know that ninety-five percent of the customers are going to be limited by their roof size, then that number makes life easy. And there'll be that five percent that may need more, and maybe they have a huge house and they have more roof area, and they use more energy, we can address them on a case-by-case basis. But we need a number that's going to address ninety-five percent of people, and we know physically they're not going to be able to meet the number, or they can meet the number based on an average roof size.
Will it still be in there that someone who is well below in their usage of whatever our cap is, if somebody is way below, will we be evaluating their power bills so that, because then ultimately, they could go so much higher than they all, they need?
Right, and, and, and it's going to have to be a balance, and, 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 and so yes, somebody could be a very frugal energy user, and live in a big house and have a big roof, and they're probably going to be on, on the side of the equation where they would be an exporter. But I, I got to imagine that, on the whole, for that ninety-five percent, we're going to be okay. And there's good, there's always going to be exceptions to the rule. I don't think the city's going to come knocking on their door telling them to shut off some of their solar panels.
Does anybody online have any questions? I know I need to...
Answer, Steve.
...to contact back and find out from my sister, because I know she's had solar panels on her house in North Carolina for a couple of years, and I believe that she's only had one or two bills that she's actually had to pay anything but the service fees, because she does have the perfect alignment for her house. Her house is not that big, but the roof that's facing the sun is perfect and huge, and it's covered, you know, with solar panels. It was the maximum they could put on the roof.
So she, she would fall exactly under the definition of what the state law is kind of saying. You, she's producing her own self-needs.
Right, covering everything that she needs, and I believe originally, they did not pay for anything back, put back into the system on Duke Power, but I think the law has since changed in North Carolina, I think they've been forced to pay...
Pay M F R.
Uh, like a market price back on it, up to a certain percent.
And that's where we were back in twenty seventeen, when we implemented, um, net metering after Bob's initial presentations.
The very, I'm sorry.
Let's see, I just wanted, I have solar panels in my house, my husband was with Bob, um, whenever that was. Um, we got them put on our house, and then the policy in the city changed, and so our first bill where we would see the benefit of having the solar panels put on, we got notice that it was, you know, down to like one-fifth of the value, whatever. Um, so, I've been along for this interesting ride. Um, one of the things, as a consumer with solar panels, that's nice, we do pay, um, we are not an exporter of power, it was calculated very carefully, that we would not get more panels than we would use our roof faces south, so we have a perfect setup, like your sister does, um, and there's a lot of very careful calculations. Um, one of the nice things with the carryover, I don't know if that is possible to keep, um, is, take January, when it's very cloudy, we're making very little solar, the panels now are much more effective, so they are able to pull, you know, little sunlight that's available, but when we have those credits, not that recently, we have not had many, but still, you have a sunny month like July, and you're going to have some carryover, so that was enticing to potential, like, as a potential solar customer, when we were thinking about that. It was nice, it was a nice way to think about, um, the winter months here. So, I don't know if it's possible to keep that with a net billing setup, um...
So over the course of a year, that kind of, over the course of a year, dollars and cents-wise, we still reach the same spot.
Okay.
Um, we could, like, like, Mr. Flora had asked earlier, what happens if he produces too much and he actually gets a credit?
Mm-hmm.
And I had said, well, you know, because you have a composite bill, that credit's just going to go towards some other point in your bill.
Right.
If customers really wanted to, we could have an electric credit line item on there. I don't know that it would make much sense...
Okay.
Because, because in the end, you're still, you're still going to pay the bottom line of your bill, which includes all these other components, so.
Okay.
And in the end, you're still, even though now you're not carrying kilowatt hours from month to month, you're getting a, you're getting the dollars and cents upfront.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah. You could save those, but...
But just not, not as much, like, it won't even out to what she's paying in December versus what credit she gets, it'll be half in July if the credit pass, but it won't net the same way that it's netted in the past.
Correct.
That's right.
They're not, it's not, we're not proposing a one-to-one.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I, I think, I see the justification for that, when you look at the reality of it, you buy it for a dollar out on the market, but yet, what, the customer pays for it at their house is a dollar fifty, and then you turn back around and you have to take the excess that the customer makes and sell it back into the market where you paid a dollar for it, that's all you can pay for it.
It's all we're going to get.
Right, that's all we're going to get for it.
Yeah.
Minus our other costs.
So if we pay them more than that dollar in your example...
Right.
That's got to come from somewhere.
Right, and it, and if it was back here at the dollar fifty, that extra fifty cents has to be borne by everybody else on the system.
Exactly.
Abby, or Mark?
Yeah, I, I would advocate for those that, that can't have solar. It's not going to work at my house. I, I've got complete tree covers, there's no way I can do it at my house, so I would advocate for people like me, that it's like, I shouldn't be subsidizing others in that, in that method. I mean, it's like, hey, good, if you can zero out your costs, that's great for you, but don't penalize me because I can't.
Um, I think, and this isn't necessarily something we need to dive in tonight, but it's brought up a lot of questions that I have, just on how we approach our energy pricing and all of these things now, when reality is, reality sucks right now for us. Um, so, what we decide now versus what we decide ten years, five years before Prairie State closes, and suddenly we have to start looking at what our capacity is, how we're going to incentivize energy efficiency, how we're going to incentivize people to get solar and self-generate, because by the time we have to go out and renegotiate all these contracts, you know, I think a lot of the things that Bob's analysis will probably bring up too, is that the cost, as he was saying, the cost of getting it from out, out on the grid to Batavia is half our cost. So if you eliminate all of that, and you're getting it from your roof down, you know, those are costs that Bob and Sarah are not, are not paying for. They're paying for their own, you know, short distribution, so if we can get more of that in the future, when we have to go and buy capacity and look at our transmission lines and think about how many linemen we need to have up here, if we can cut those costs, we're going to be in a lot better place when Prairie State is no longer our reality.
Very, a hundred percent true. Uh, and, and, and a typical utility with a balanced portfolio, that utility is having to buy stuff at the market, and they truly need to buy stuff at the market, so therefore, if their customers can save by, um, um, conserving or generating their own power, now the utility has, doesn't have to buy as much, and then it's overall better for everyone, no doubt about it. We are not, as you know, we're not in that position. We unfortunately have so much coming to us, we don't know what to do with it all, but when the day comes where we can get to that position, then conservation programs and self-generation programs can be something that we certainly can promote. One of my biggest regrets is, those are the fun things that we're not able to do.
I have, I have one more question. Is there a maximum, like, is it a hundred and ten percent, two to one, three to one? What if somebody had solar panels and they were producing three times more power than what they were using?
So, according to the law, they're only supposed to produce what they, what they, what they need.
Okay.
Okay? And that's why we're going to set those system limits to reasonably estimate what a typical residential customer needs, reasonably estimate what a small commercial customer needs... customer needs. And again, based on roof size, most people aren't going to be able to exceed that anyways, because they just won't be able to. There will be, and it kind of goes to Alderman Beck's question from earlier, there may be that occasional odd lot that has a huge house, but they use very little energy, and therefore, they could install a fairly large system, you know, that, that's up to our maximum.
Right.
Not exceeding our maximum, but up to our maximum. And that still results in them pushing out a lot of electrons. It's just going to be what, what it is. I think those are going to be few and far between.
Okay. Okay.
So that's the background. We do have the draft policy. We can bring this, but the intention is to continue to bring this back. We need to eventually, before mid-March, adopt the policy, adopt ordinance changes. And then within this policy is another document known as the interconnection agreement, which we don't formally have an interconnection policy today, but that is all the nuts and bolts that go into connecting these systems to our grid. That has to be outlined in the policy too. So we'll return back to you with those things. You do have a draft copy of the policy tonight. If you read through it and have questions, let me know. I will plan to basically put this back on the agenda next week. We can walk through the policy itself in more detail next week.
Okay. And then, do you want to just try to do, after next week, you want to try to do like every two weeks, so we make sure we get this done before whatever the deadline is in March?
Yeah, we're, we need to be on a weekly schedule.
Weekly, okay.
We can keep, we can keep going, coming back to you then with a resolution, coming back to you with an ordinance. By mid-March, we need to be done.
Okay. Because I want to just make sure that we stay on that schedule, so that we do get it done on time, not that everything will get done with the state, and I'm sure not send anybody
Yeah, we just want to stay in compliance with what the legislation requires of us.
Until they change it again.
I am stopping sharing. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Flora.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on then to item seventeen, which is project status. Laura?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. This past week, the City of Batavia had an opportunity to celebrate the retirement of two longtime employees. Byron Richardson, who is our superintendent of our wastewater treatment plant, worked for the City of Batavia for thirty-six years. And he oversaw the first phase of the very complicated and, and complex project of the upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant. Over the course of the last several years, set us up for success going into our next phase. But in addition to being an absolute expert in what he did for our wastewater treatment plant, I want to call Byron out for his environmentalism. Byron, for more than ten years, was the staff liaison to the Environmental Commission, and fulfilling that role meant a lot to Byron. As well, he served as the Tri-City representative on the Fox River Study Group, which for many years has focused on studying, but also improving the health of the Fox River waterway throughout its, its length. And he also served for, I think, eleven years as the Tri-City representative on that, on that committee. And so it was really nice to be able to celebrate his long career, and he certainly made a lot of contributions. The other retirement celebration was on Friday, and that was for Fire Chief Randy Deike. And Randy, too, has seen some amazing accomplishments during his tenure here. Randy wrote a grant that paid for the lion's share of one of our engines. And that, that was truly extraordinary, in order to be able to get a financial contribution to help us to pay for one of the most expensive pieces of equipment that a city can buy. And, and certainly, another star achievement was the, getting the ISO one certification, which, you know, he, he watched us move up successively. But then, in, back in twenty eighteen, I believe, is when we were able to achieve that ISO one certification. And just to let you know, a mere point one percent of fire departments in the United States have that distinction. So really proud of all that Randy was able to accomplish during, during his career here as well. On the other end of the career spectrum, the Batavia Police Department's newest officer, Joseph Goodella, began working on January twenty-fourth. He comes to the agency with prior experience from the Cook County Sheriff's Police, Sheriff's Office. And he is scheduled to be officially sworn in before the City Council at your February seventh meeting. The Plant Commission meeting for February second is canceled, but they will be meeting on February sixteenth to review the proposed culvers on Randall Road, and also, and, and their conditional use. The Avenue Marketplace development is nearing completion, the onsite utility work. So they'll be beginning installation of a temporary gravel roadway that will allow issuance of permits for the Starbucks and Chipotle buildings to be constructed. And revised plans for the Casey's Gas and Convenience Store out on Main Street have been resubmitted and are under review. In public works, our electric metering crews have completed their change out of all residential meters. The new residential electric meters are able to be read remotely via radio equipment. Commercial and industrial customer meters will be upgraded over the next two to three years. Our meter upgrades for our residential water customers have kind of, is still ongoing, and it's slowed down, because during COVID, we weren't able to get inside people's houses to do that work. And also, just a reminder, as we may or may not get a tremendous amount of snow over the course of the next three days, the city takes great pride in its ability to clear our streets of snow, so that people notice when they drive into, into Batavia that they're the cleanest streets around. But realize that it is of the utmost priority for us to first focus on this, the city's main arterial roadways, followed by subdivision collector streets, and then finally, getting to the local streets and cul-de-sacs. So we certainly appreciate everybody's patience as we try to address those. It's sometimes a challenge when you've got an inch of snow coming down every hour. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Anybody online have any questions? Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any others this evening? Okay, hearing none. Then we need a motion to go into executive session for setting the price of land for sale and for personnel. And I do not believe we'll have any action after the executive session.
So moved, Ure?
Second, Serone.
Okay, motion by Ure, second by Serone. Roll call, please.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanson?
Aye.
Zofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yazzy?
Aye.
Imalay?
Aye.
Motion carried, fourteen to zero.